Order and ask the clerk to call the roll.
Mr. Bracken?
Here.
Mr. Ellerby?
Here.
Ms. Franklin?
Here.
Ms. French?
Here.
Mr. Perthridge?
Here.
Ms. Reagan?
Here.
Mayor Snively?
I'm here, and we would invite you to join us if you'd like to pledge allegiance.
My pledge allegiance to the republic of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, can I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Certainly.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Thank you, Alex. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Thank you. We'll move to public participation, and we begin with the proclamation. Whereas the American Cancer Society is a nationwide, community-based, volunteer-run health organization dedicated to eliminating cancer as a major health concern by striving to prevent cancer, save lives, and diminish suffering from cancer through research, education, advocacy, and service. And whereas Relay for Life is the American Cancer Society's nationwide signature activity and a celebration of life where we celebrate, remember, and fight back. And whereas Relay for Life teams will spend the evening enjoying music and family activities together while team members walk around a track relay-style for the duration of the event. And whereas Relay for Life Oxford has surpassed raising $1 million in lifesaving donations since its inception in 1999, raising the most of any Relay for Life event in Butler County. And whereas a luminary event will be held on July 20, 2023, in the Uptown Parks on Lot 52 at 10:00 p.m. And whereas Relay for Life provides an opportunity for community camaraderie and unity in the fight against cancer. Now therefore, I, William B. Snively, Mayor of the City of Oxford, Ohio, do hereby proclaim July 20, 2023 as a day in recognition of the American Cancer Society's Relay for Life Oxford and encourage all citizens to participate in the event. I believe we have someone here to receive this.
Hello, I'm Jennifer Lake, and I was not expecting to speak tonight, but Heather said that none of you bite, so, okay. I started actually participating in Relay in 1999. I walked in memory of my friend Linda Martin-Schnapper, and I've been participating ever since then. If you go to Kroger, I'm sure that Sherry Borquine will sell you something that's part of our fundraisers. If you know Joyce Wilhelm, she'll somehow get $10 out of you for a luminary. She's very involved. Karen Martino is our chair. Lisa Martin and Lisa Sheard are also very involved also. Most of our events have now gone virtual. COVID kind of threw a wrench into our event several years ago, and we tried to keep it going, but without a committee of 15 to 20 people, it's very hard to put on an event the size of what we used to do. So the poor show that will be here still supports us. There's a wine tasting in early August that Karen's group puts on at the Country Club, and there are several other virtual things and private things we do to try and raise money. So anytime you participate, we thank you because, as Joyce Wilhelm always says, "We would love to be put out of the fundraising business by a cure." So, thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you very much. We appreciate you coming. Okay, next we have a presentation on Share Fest from Carol Michael. Hi, Carol.
Good evening. When I started Share Fest 17 years ago, my purposes were three: to help people in need, to teach Miami University students it's better to pass things on than to throw them away, and to help our environment by diverting things from the landfill. Our 2023 Share Fest was held on Thursday, May 11 through Tuesday, May 16. This year, we picked up materials from all residence halls on campus and accepted drop-offs at our Chestnut Fields parking lot location from our off-campus students and community members. This year, we diverted over 79 tons of food, clothing, furniture, household goods, and e-waste from the landfill and passed all but the e-waste on to people in need. Our beneficiary groups included Goodwill, which received seven trailers full of goods, TOPS, our local food pantry, which received 3,624 pounds of food for their clients, in addition to 1,579 pounds of materials which were passed along to several families connected with the Family Resource Center; Open Hands Pantry in Hamilton, which received an estimated nine and three-quarters tons of food and materials to support their operation; Parkview Arms Resident Council, which received approximately 1,200 pounds of furniture and household goods for a number of families in their community; Coen Recycling, which hauled away eight bulk bins of e-waste, including two full buckets of batteries; Butler County Success, which received 1,150 pounds of materials for students and families from several schools across Butler County; and Thread Up Oxford, which received some shelving units and hangers for their operation. We are very proud of the nearly 50 volunteers from the community who helped make Share Fest possible, including my fellow Share Fest board members Sam Perry, Secretary, Karen Baker, Treasurer, Rob Abowitz, Chair of Planning Committee, Chantel Ragoo, also a city council member and Vice Mayor, Shawna Rosenberg, and Olivia Heron, the new Director of Sustainability at Miami University. Site coordinators were Alice Lott for our local TOPS food pantry and Carla Blackmar Rice. Pickup volunteers were Kate Rosmanier, Parkview Arms Resident Association, Jamie Priestman from Parkview Arms Residence, Jane Fields, Steve Chafin, John Wolonovsky, Suzie Hummel, Linda Simons, Sherry Martin, and several others from TOPS, and several others from our community at large, and Brittany Marissa from Delta Sigma Pi. There were 26 volunteers from the Open Hands Food Pantry in Hamilton. We also had 10 paid staff from Goodwill of Greater Cincinnati, including two supervisors. We had fewer volunteers this year than previous years, mostly because several Talawanda athletic teams were unavailable this year due to their competitive schedule during Share Fest. For marketing, with the help of 45 Miami student volunteers, we hung 2,000 color door tags on rental properties across Oxford to remind them to participate in Share Fest. In coordination with the Miami ASG Secretary of Off-Campus Affairs, we sent two emails to over 7,500 off-campus Miami students. We posted about Share Fest on several Facebook pages, including Miami Parents and Families, Oxford Talk, and Oxford Neighborhood Share. The City of Oxford provided information about Share Fest in its move-out guide on the city website and social media. We sent an email to Oxford landlords. We posted several times in Miami Student Life Instagram account. We hung posters on almost 200 dumpsters throughout the city of Oxford. Our partners at Goodwill also sent marketing emails and social media posts out. Our expenses continued to be very modest, thanks to gifts and kind from the City of Oxford, which provided two rollover dumpsters for damage and unacceptable donations, and Miami University, which permitted the use of a section of Chestnut Fields parking lot, provided signage for the lot, and permitted the use of a service vehicle for doing pickups and drop-offs. Our partners at Thread Up Oxford also provided the use of their large van for doing pickups. Our other expenses, which amounted to under 500, were covered by past donations from individuals and churches in the City of Oxford. This year, we recorded over 520 drop-offs of donations from students who live off-campus and their parents and members of the Oxford community. This was almost double the amount of drop-offs from 2022. We believe that this increase was caused by increased awareness among students and community members who became active in the e-waste component of Share Fest. Once again, free e-waste recycling was enabled by our partner at Butler County Recycling and Solid Waste. This year, we piloted a new initiative to establish donation sites in the rental offices of several large apartment complexes. Participating this year were Level 27, the Annex, the Commons, Oxford West, Hawks Landing, The Verge, and Chestnut Place apartment complexes. The response was modest, but we are optimistic that more students in these complexes will take advantage of these new drop-off sites in future years. Overall, it was a very successful year for Share Fest. During our annual debrief meeting with beneficiary groups, volunteers, and the board, we discussed several topics for future consideration, including getting more materials to individuals and families in Oxford. We may explore inviting families and individuals to make their needs known to TOPS Food Pantry or the Family Resource Center so that materials can be set aside for them. Storage and transportation continue to be barriers for meeting this goal. We want to divert more mattresses from the landfill. Next year, we plan to collaborate with New Live Furniture in Cincinnati. We've already made contact with this agency, which may be able to help us divert dozens, if not hundreds, of unwanted, good-conditioned mattresses from the landfill. We want to divert more furniture from off-campus students from the curb and dumpsters. As we drive around town during immediately after Miami's graduation, we still see what appears to be useful furniture on curbs and in dumpsters in spite of our efforts to reach students and encourage participation in Share Fest. The shortage of able-bodied volunteers in our community with vehicles suitable for moving furniture continues to be a challenge. We continue to appreciate very much the partnership with the City of Oxford and welcome your continued support and guidance in this important endeavor. Thank you to everyone who helped make Share Fest very successful this year.
Thank you, Carol. Appreciate it. Does anybody have any questions for Carol? I know that we all appreciate very much what Share Fest does, and I think it's an asset to our community that's really something that you should be proud of having a big part of. Thank you very much.
Takes a lot of good people to help.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next we have a presentation from Police Lieutenant Jeff Robinson. Welcome, Jeff.
Mr. Mayor, good evening, council. Tonight, the chief and I had talked a couple weeks ago about bringing forward some information about a project we've been working on over the past five or six weeks. I thought tonight would be a good night to share that with you. So you may be aware, if you follow social media, if you talk to parents in the Talawanda community, we've got a problem with vape and tobacco products. And that has kind of built up to the point where it takes a lot of time and for meetings discussing what we're going to do about it, how we're going to handle it. So we identified these needs, and these needs were based off, you know, obviously the increase for parents. But talking with our SROs, what they're seeing in the schools, what they're having to deal with. The past six months, we've spent a lot of time with community development in the city manager's office, working on the tobacco retail licensing legislation. I think you're going to hear later about that. But then we wanted to do a follow-up. So in 2022, we did some compliance checks, and they were not large-scale. We targeted some of the areas that we thought were the biggest points of complaints that we'd heard from community members. And you'll see on these notes on the screen that in March of 2022, we had eight compliance checks done. Two of the places failed. And then again in August, 12 checked and two failed again. So we said, hey, what are we going to do about this? Can we put together just kind of a little task force? What are we going to do? How are we going to handle it? So we looked at the complaints from parents. You know, the chief's office, he receives people, phone calls, emails, people coming in a meeting with him begging, hey, do something. My kid's buying from this store. He's buying from this place. We need you guys to do something. You know, we get messaging coming in on social media, but then we monitor social media, right? So we've got a very, very robust social media presence. And we get a lot of comments from people. Hey, can you do something about this? My kid, we found this vape. I didn't want to call you guys, but I found this vape, and they said they got it from this store. Can you do something about that? There's also time taken up where our officers get called to homes to kind of mediate parent and child problems with these vape and tobacco products. So we looked at those and said, all right, how are we going to solve this problem? We looked at the SROs and said, hey, what do you guys see? What are you guys getting? And from them, at the middle school alone, I think it was about half of the year, if Officer Durkin was telling me correctly, they didn't start actually tracking this till mid-year with some help from the Healthy Coalition, but they collected 87 vape devices. At the high school, they collected 124, and 23 of those did contain marijuana products. So those are in our schools. They're happening. It's occurring, and they've asked us to help out with our SROs. The interesting note about this is when we talked to the high school SRO, he said, well, they get a lot of problems, and they've had a number of fights where they've broken out over these vapes. And whether that's, hey, I gave you money to go buy me a vape, and you didn't buy me the vape I wanted, or, hey, I need you to hold this vape for me while kids are in class, or that we know we're going to get searched, so hold this, and then somebody gets in trouble. He said there was a number of fights that broke out in the school that came back to some type of problem with the vape trade, so to speak, in the school. We looked at, what's the test process? How are we going to test out this retail licensing process? And again, you'll hear more about that tonight, but in the police department, we were concerned with, okay, how much staff time is this going to take? You know, are we going to be looking at to do all of the places in town, all the places that would be permitted in town? How long is that going to take? Can we do it? Can we manage compliance? And I'll tell you, you'll see some stats in a minute. We've got about 100 man-hours into this project over the past five weeks, maybe a little bit more, maybe a few hours less, but we had to dedicate resources to this to make sure it got done in a timely manner. We wanted to look at what's being sold in the open market. So are there illegal products that are actually being sold that aren't legalized by the state of Ohio just yet? Are they selling CBD? Are they selling the Delta 8? Are they selling Delta 9? Are they THC-based? Are they hemp-based? What are they selling? Because that's been something we've heard from our task forces in the drug world. We've heard from the chiefs of police associations that products are coming in that aren't legal in the state of Ohio, and they're being re-marked, relabeled as something that is legal, and hospitals are then seeing overdoses because people are getting things that they didn't expect to get. So that's something that we wanted to look as well. So a little bit about this task force we put together. It was one sergeant, five officers. One of those officers is actually one of our SROs, so he had some knowledge of what was going on, what the products were. Part of this, and we didn't really mention it, was we did some shoulder tap checks where we sat in the parking lots, and he saw people he knew and would go up and talk to them. And we weren't looking to get people in trouble. We were looking to have some intervention and counseling and discussions with them of, hey, you don't know who's watching. You know you're not allowed to buy this. Let's have a discussion about it. But we tasked them with three main goals, and those goals were identify all the retail locations that are selling tobacco products in Oxford. We wanted to purchase for testing some of the Delta 8, Delta 9 cartridges that are being sold, so we could send those off to find out what exactly is being sold here in town. And then we wanted to do compliance checks with under 21-year-old informants. So we have a number of people, and they range from 17 to 20, that we were able to partner with and a big help to the Healthy Coalition because I think some people that are on committees at the school or groups at the school were able to get people from that to help us out. So big help from them. So in Oxford, we found that there's nine shops dedicated to selling tobacco vape smoking-related products. So the old term was like a head shop or a paraphernalia shop. We have nine of those in town right now that were open during our sample time. So again, I'll tell you on these notes, this was based on the timeframe we were in. I know there were some stores that have closed. There were some stores that are closed because students aren't here. They're closed for the summer. So these numbers were what our people found out in the field. So nine selling products. Then there's 15 stores in Oxford that they sell them secondary to whatever their primary market is. So, you know, convenience store, gas station, grocery store, they sell product, but that's not their primary function. Our plainclothes officers made purchases, and we talked about this, of products that are advertised as legal CBD products. Those are off at our crime lab right now, being tested. There is a process in place, and I talked a little bit about the Chiefs of Police Associations, some of the drug task forces. They've had a lot of involvement. There's been some news articles that have come out about this recently. There's a process the prosecutor wants to see. We can't just go in and say, hey, you're selling an illegal product. We're going to charge you with it. We have to test their product, verify that it is an illegal product, put them on notice, and then we've got to do a purchase again at another time in the future that shows that they're not complying with basically a cease and desist. So we're starting that process with our shops to make sure that we're in the right ballgame so that those task forces can handle that down the road. All right, so our compliance checks, again, we did four different rounds of compliance checks. There were 55 attempts to purchase tobacco products. 48 of those attempts passed where there was no sale. Some of the stores wouldn't even let our undercover people in the store. They carted them right at the door and made them leave. On seven attempts, we were able to purchase, and the interesting note that we found is of those seven, four of the purchases were from one single store. So we have a store that clearly has an issue. We've began our follow-ups to these compliance checks this week. We have started notifying the stores that passed, and then we're building up the charging documents for those that did not. Moving forward, as I said, we're going to issue our findings to the stores, filing the criminal complaints where necessary. We're going to be doing this again in the fall of 2023 with a large-scale check now that, once the students are back, we have a complete sample size of all the stores that will be open during that time period. And then we anticipate helping community development with the tobacco retail licensing rollout as they need it. And with that, take any questions or comments or anything that the council may have at this time?
Thank you, Jeff. Anybody have questions or comments?
Of the two stores that failed checks, were they, well, let me rephrase that. You had those tests that you did in spring and then in fall. Were they the same two stores that failed?
I don't know that off the top of my head, and we haven't notified the ones that failed yet, so it probably wouldn't be fair to say that in an open meeting just yet.
The follow-up is that the one that failed before, is that one of those two that was part of that?
Right. I will let you know, and I'm sure Chief will make sure that we do get information to you once we have charged everybody involved with this round.
Understood.
Go ahead, Jason. Do we have any idea how often underage users purchase it directly versus from friends? It sounds like there's a pretty big market outside of the stores.
You know, we get complaints of friends buying for other people, but people buying direct. There was officers when they were in the parking lot, they recognized, and I think there was a 13-year-old, a 14-year-old, walking into a store, walking right back out with their product. So they're buying directly.
Yeah, I'm just to comment that there's been a lot of research lately coming out on more and more really serious health effects.
Right.
Especially from the flavored ones, which are the ones that the kids want the most. So I'm really happy to see the efforts that you're taking.
Yeah, thank you for your hard work on this. A couple questions. One, is our social services liaison responding to any of this? You mentioned sometimes being called by parents. Is that something that's part of her purview or?
I think it could be. I don't know that we've had her directly involved. Usually, the reports that I've seen have been in the evening hours, and it's coming out of, hey, I need you to, we've had a parent call and say, hey, come scare my kid. We don't come and scare kids, but we'll come and have a chat, and, you know, if you need us to collect it for destruction, we'll collect that product for destruction and make sure it gets destroyed.
Okay. And then my second question, you talked about shoulder tap interventions. I hadn't heard that term before. Is that different or similar to a field stop?
It could be similar to a field stop.
Okay.
And they're looking specifically to, it's officers that aren't in uniform. This one involved our SRO, so he was in plainclothes and sitting in a car watching, and they get out and then shoulder tap as much like we do, like bar enforcement. So you go through a bar, and you see somebody that's a very youthful appearance, and you talk to him, stop and talk to him, and quickly figure out that they're not of age to have the product they have.
Go ahead, Jason.
Could I feel welcome in? So, but with field stops, you might actually have legal consequences for that. I assume these shoulder taps are just discussions?
The ones from this project, correct. Now, we have, in years past, when we've done alcohol, and we do, shoulder tap is just a phrase that we use for that type of enforcement. There may be enforcement that comes out of that, but for this project, we did not cite any juveniles with anything on this project.
David?
So I just really wanted to thank you because I think those of us who are not in the world of using this product, the only visual things we see are the stores, you know, and you look in the stores, and it doesn't give you a good feeling about what's happening in there where the candy is sold right inside the door en route to flavored products, you know. But I think that, so we're obviously moving forward with legislation because we all suspect we have a problem. We see the national statistics, but I really appreciate having data that's local, that it's, you know, I don't know if this was part of the plan, but when we look at this legislation later and the public welfare justification, boom, you know, we have data that suggests we have a public health problem with this. We have a policing, you know, kind of problem.
I would just caution, and I appreciate that, and I would just caution that this is not a great sample size, you know, and this is not done scientifically.
Yeah.
But, you know, it's there, right? We can't invent the numbers.
And the SROs are, you know, in the schools, that's kind of a frontline situation, and I think they have data. They have anecdotal data. So anyway, it makes me feel better about what we're moving forward with this legislation, that it's not unfounded, our concerns here, so.
Okay, Alex, did you have something?
I did. So speaking of SROs and data, do we have any indication from Talawanda moving forward if they'll continue to data-share with us when we do kind of an expanded version of this with either school disciplinary data or anything they may have to keep track?
So I think the partnership is with the Healthy Coalition.
Okay.
And, you know, we've got a great relationship with them, and, you know, our SROs obviously work daily with those folks. So I don't anticipate any barriers moving forward. That's a good partnership, and I think even talking to Chief, I think Amy Macheska was wanting to be here tonight, but I think she may be on vacation, so.
Yeah, she said she, sorry, she couldn't be here for it.
But, yeah, no, I mean, I think that's a great partnership. We're happy to, you know, collaborate with them, and we certainly get a lot of resources from them and try to help them as well whenever we can.
Thank you.
I think kudos are due not only to you but to the Coalition for a Healthy Community, and I think they do a great job on a number of fronts, but this is front and center.
I'd love to take it myself, but I'd be remiss if I didn't thank Sergeant Jenkins. He had a big part in this. We assigned him to the project, and really, he took it, ran with it, and carried it for the five-week process. I'm just reporting out what he found.
Very good.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you very much. We appreciate it.
Yes, sir. Mayor, if I could address a subject for a moment, please. So I want to put this in a broader context. Recently, it's become very challenging for staff, particularly on the manager's side, zoning, police, and law directors across the state because the legislature has become so proactive in so many different ways. And without the Ohio Municipal League and the Ohio Municipal Attorneys Association tracking some of these things that go on, we simply wouldn't know what's being put in there. And the tobacco ban legislation is an important thing to understand what's going on in Columbus. Twice within the last eight months, the legislature's attempted to, once passed legislation, to prohibit municipalities from governing or controlling flavored tobacco. to prohibit municipalities from governing or controlling flavored tobacco, nicotine products, et cetera. The governor has twice vetoed those measures because he, he believes that there is a public health safety crisis with that. He's following guidance from the CDC. And I think that we can expect that our, the current governor will continue to veto those bills. So as we sit here today, pending legislation consideration by council, we have home rule powers to control what's happening in our community. I just want to caution everybody, I don't know how long that might last, but I would say that given the current dynamic, if there is a desire with the majority of council to do that, I think acting promptly is a good idea.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, now we will turn to the public. And if there's anyone here wishing to address council about items that are not on the agenda, or if they're on the consent agenda, we'd ask you to come forward. Go ahead, Ann. And just give us your name and where you live, and we'll give you up to five minutes.
Thank you. Ann Fuhr, I live on Dana Drive in Southern Knowles. I'm here this evening with Ann Bailey. The two of us, along with Jenny Baylor and Diane Luther Veerling, make up the coordinating group for a, a group, a coalition which has emerged over the past 18 months. We've identified ourselves as an Oxford Area Solutions for Housing. With representatives from six sectors, government, human services, philanthropic groups, economy, education, and civic and faith communities, we're engaging in a series of gatherings for community-based action planning for response to and prevention of homelessness in the area. Members of city council and several members of staff received invitations to our next meeting scheduled for this coming Monday from 7, 5 to 7 at the Oxford Presbyterian Church Seminary Building. And I wanted to make a public comment, particularly because we want to extend an invitation to members of the public who might want to join us in our efforts, although we have sent out emails to over 70 people. We all, all of us here are acutely aware right now of the impact of extreme heat and violent storms on all of us. People who live outdoors or in vehicles are particularly vulnerable to those extremes. Four months from now, we will be focusing on the impact of extreme cold and winter storms on those same vulnerable members of our community. Beginning planning now for those situations is essential. Looking across the nation and around the globe, local governments are essential partners in successful housing-first initiatives. On its website, the city identifies the Family Resource Center and Talawanda Oxford Pantry and Social Services as community partners. These nonprofits provide a variety of wraparound services to our neighbors, about 600 unique families a year in the school district who live in poverty. There is much to applaud in the city government's past and ongoing commitments to these partnerships. And I want to mention just a few of those, as you know. A housing-first stance, recognition of the need for permanent supportive housing, development of affordable housing stock, commitment to creating a more resilient community in the face of increasing climate crises with adequate warming and cooling shelters, allocation of funds to staffing of a cold shelter, prioritizing of a one-stop facility, and economic development, among others. These city priorities and potential budget allocations will inform our planning efforts as we move forward. And particularly interested as you move forward with next year's budget, to see what that looks like in relation to these efforts. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Ann. We appreciate it. Would anyone else like to address council? Sure, come on up.
My name is Robin Baughman, B-A-U-G-H-M-A-N. I'm on Ryan Drive here in Oxford. Relative newcomer. One of the things that really distresses me, not that I am not unfamiliar with college towns, but how much the college has taken over our uptown. I, I, I don't know if there's an answer through the city council, or if we just have to accept that they give us so much of our existence. But I would damn sure like to see more adult-type stores, like Apple Tree, you know, adult-type restaurants. This is more a plea out of ignorance. And I appreciate your patience for listening to me. Thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate you coming.
Good evening, council, Mr. Mayer, city employees, guests, friends. My name is Ann Bailey, and I live at 192 Stone Creek Drive, Oxford. Currently, I am serving as leader of the Eradicating Systemic Poverty Team of the Oxford Presbyterian Church. I've done a few other things in my life, but that's what I'm doing right now, as well as, as Ann Fuhr just mentioned, being a part of the Oxford Area Solutions for Housing, especially homelessness. I will not take much time. You've heard from one, Ann. Start hearing from the second one. Is that my, my name has an E at the end of it, and that, that gives me some latitude to add some extra energy, emphasis to the issue of homelessness in the Oxford community, as well as, as other areas as well. I fully support everything Ann has reported to you. And I could probably add some other things. Both of us have done research on this area, have read lots about it. I'm going to add one more E-word, and that is, I believe strongly, and others do as well, that shelter, safe and secure shelter, is indeed an entitlement that all people should have, even when they cannot provide it for themselves, perhaps because they have no job, or they have a low-wage job, or they live in a place, there are many places, like a place with high cost of housing, or they have health issues, physical or mental, or they experience a variety of things that are unfamiliar to most of us, and I won't name them all, but they cannot provide for themselves. Truly, I believe, is responsibility of the government and the citizens who are able and willing to pay taxes, and the citizens who have energy and are willing to help to provide some sort of shelter, be it a cold shelter in the winter, or an all-year-round shelter, which increasingly we're going to need as we experience these 90 and 100-degree temperatures. Our city has done wonderful things. When we walk out, well, it's not dark, and it won't be for a while, but we know if it were, if it were November, December, there'd be streetlights lighting our way. We have walking paths, we have parks, we have this fantastic swimming pool. My children grew up when they went swimming, I had to try, and they loved it. I took them to see our, our, our new swimming pool a few years ago. They were amazed. We have done, our community, so much. I think we can also provide housing for those people who are left without it and those charitable challenges. I thank you all for listening.
Thank you, Ann. Appreciate you coming. Anyone else like to address council? Sure, come on up.
Good evening. My name is Tom Radomski Bamba. I live at 6094 Fairfield Road. I also have the pleasure of serving as the president of the union that represents your city's firefighters, Local 5272 of the International Association of Firefighters. I noticed recently on a Facebook post where people were asking about the SROs, and that one response that someone felt they received had to do with budget shortfalls regarding the fire department and the question of the levy that might be needed to cover those shortfalls. There's been a lot of discussion between the union and the administration in our Cooperative Labor Management Committee. And the subject has come up to look at where we are headed and what we need to get there. And not to speak in any direction on the subject, but to simply bring up that, noticed on the agenda, that there wasn't any mention of moving forward on a levy, and that we're about three weeks away from the deadline to get it on the ballot, if it's something that the council would like to move forward on. So I want to thank you for your time and your consideration.
Thank you, Tom. Anyone else like to address council tonight? Like to thank you all for coming. We have a big crowd in the back. I'm glad to see you all here. Welcome. We're glad to have you here. We will move next to the consent agenda, and I would entertain a motion to approve it.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Are there any items to be removed?
I would like to remove item C.
Okay, C will be removed. All in favor of approving the consent agenda, A and B, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, Ann, questions?
I just noticed a minor typo, but also it's, it's a weird vehicle, the police department to own. And so I just wanted us to explain to the public how we obtained it, if that's all right.
How do we have a Mercedes? I think that's the question.
Very fancy, expensive Mercedes.
Thanks, Jeff. The short answer is, is this was towed in and left behind. As you know, the police department does manage an impound lot. Sergeant Secora does a great job of making sure we keep spaces open down there. After about 30 days, when vehicles are left behind, we take ownership of them through a process that the state of Ohio has spelled out for us. Occasionally, those cars have some value. We've been able to make use of them within the police department and other departments. This car is going to be very, very expensive for us to maintain. It is a high-end car that, quite frankly, we just don't have a need for. So we would like to get rid of it at the earliest convenience and buy auction and get it off our books.
Okay.
Yeah, that's all I wanted to hear. I would have had weird questions if I was the public, wondering how we got there.
We're not, we're not buying Mercedes.
That's what I wanted to confirm. Minor typo.
It was not something we purchased.
Absolutely not. And then a minor typo, we're missing a no on page 40 on the first whereas, that's all.
Yeah, we'll get there.
Yeah.
All right. All those in favor of approving item C for the consent agenda indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much. We have resolutions. You may read the first one.
A resolution expressing the city of Oxford's opposition to issue one and support of preserving Ohio's constitution and majority rule.
Is there a motion to adopt a resolution?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, and I will let David or Jason present it since it was your resolution.
You're much better talking.
So I think that Kathy Brinkman and the League of Women Voters has done a good job in, in this venue, as well as across the state, in communicating what issue one is about. If you're not paying attention to the, the Ohio State House, it's easy to be confused. Why are we having an August election when we thought we weren't doing those anymore? Why are we trying to elevate the constitution? And, and I think what the League of Women Voters has done is really helped make clear to us that this is an attempt by out-of-state interests to try to make it harder for Ohioans to amend our own constitution. Why would Ohioans want to use the initiative process to amend our constitution? Well, it could be because our legislature is gerrymandered and, and as a result, doesn't really represent Ohioans that well. You know, so I think what that means is that people have to reserve to themselves, as the constitution gives us the right to do, and, and it has worked pretty well in Ohio for the last 110 years, including laws like prohibiting gerrymandering. So I appreciate that. League of Women Voters, all it's done. I mean, this is really just, this is not a local issue, except all of us who vote in Ohio ought to have a say. Each of our votes, each of us ought to have one vote, and that vote should count. There should not be a shift towards minority rule in Ohio. So this is just an expression of values that we, in Oxford, are a little, the direction in Columbus has been concerning to us on a number of different fronts. And again, if you just look at the timing on this, it doesn't, doesn't look like deliberative process. This was a rushed election that cost, you know, I've heard the number, $20 million of our taxpayer dollars to run a low-turnout election to make it harder for us to amend our own constitution. So this is just us saying vote no.
Thank you. Does staff want to say anything about this, or, okay. Go to the public. Is there anyone from the public who would like to address this issue before council?
Hi, I'm Kathy Brinkman. I live at 404 Emerald Woods Drive in Oxford. I'm the Communication Director for the League of Women Voters of Oxford, and I'm speaking tonight on behalf of that organization. I barely have to make my points after David's description, and thank you for that. When I was here four weeks ago, I gave an update on the new voter ID requirements and the reasons that the League of Women Voters of Oxford and the League of Women Voters of Ohio oppose issue one. We hope that, we applaud you for bringing the resolution forward. We applaud you for considering it, and we think that it's important that voters are aware of what's going on in our state. We don't think that the importance of this issue can be overstated. Most news articles talk about the 60% supermajority requirement if issue one were to pass. But the truth is, the other two provisions of issue one are so dire that it will be very difficult for any grassroots organization to bring an initiative to the ballot. And every Ohioan should be concerned about that, regardless of political party or a nonpartisan organization. We've taken a stand on this, and that's unusual for the League of Women Voters to do, but we believe that it's an affront to our democracy. I think that I made this point the last time I was here, but it, I think it bears repeating, that all former, all living former Ohio governors and attorneys general are opposed to issue one as well, because the impact is not just on the legislation that is coming in November, and it seems to be that it is intended as a deterrent, and, and perhaps for legislation coming forward in 2024. But the impact will be for all legislation from this point forward. So people who live in Oxford may drive around and see all the vote no signs and think, okay, this has a pretty heavy following. Maybe I don't need to vote. Maybe I can sit this one out. You know, why go all the way to the Board of Elections if I'm going to be on vacation that day for one issue on the ballot? You know, why bother to get a vote-by-mail ballot if, for one issue? But the truth is, the opposition is heavily funded, and this is going to be a close election. So our message to voters is, don't sit this one out. You know, make a point to vote, vote early. It's going on now at Board of Elections. It's quick in, quick out, and it's very worthwhile. And again, thank you. We applaud you for bringing this resolution forward.
Thank you, Kathy. Welcome.
Welcome. I'm Stephanie Southard. I live at 111 Ryan Drive. I'm a member of the League of Women Voters, but I'm not here, although I'm on the board. I'm also on, in Holy Trinity on the Vestry, but I'm not here as that. I'm here as a private citizen who is beyond pissed. If issue one passes, bond issues that are statewide, right now, Ohio Constitution as passed in 1912 still has that $750,000 debt limit, which was fine then. But bond issues, we need money. I don't want to have to worry about I don't want to have to worry about our schools needing more levies passed because of Ed Choice, but that's a whole other issue, so forgive me. We need to vote no, as I already have, and I was so pleased, there was a waiting line at Hamilton Board of Elections. I'm thrilled you guys are thinking about passing this. I can't wait to put up a sign. Thank you.
Thank you. Hi.
My name is Elizabeth Wardle. I think Heather knows how to spell it. I live on Ledge Ridge in Oxford. Thank you for writing this resolution opposing issue one. In 1912, the Ohio Legislature was run by the corrupt and wealthy who did not look out for the rights of everyday working Ohioans. In response, those everyday Ohioans gave themselves the constitutional right to put a check on their elected officials, and that is the right that issue one would take away from us. I think we can all agree that Ohio politicians often do not represent or listen to us, none of you, of course. They sometimes take outside money from lobbyists and special interests. Some of them are even felons. In the past few months, Ohio politicians have been convicted of leading racketeering conspiracy, taking millions of dollars in bribes, and exerting undue influence. That was in our own county. Our current state politicians have also drawn congressional districts to benefit themselves and stay in office, maps that have been ruled unconstitutional by the Ohio Supreme Court but which politicians simply refuse to fix because they don't want to give up power and allow us to fairly choose our representatives. Whether we are Republicans, Democrats, independents, or something else, we have the right to vote in fair elections for people who will represent us, who will not take bribes, who will not draw legal maps to keep themselves in office, and who will write legislation that reflects the will of the people. But our ability to demand these rights will disappear if issue one passes. Right now, if we think our politicians are not representing us honestly, we can seek to put an issue on the ballot and let the people decide what is right. This happens now by getting signatures in 44 counties to put an issue on the ballot, and passing it requires a majority, 50%, plus one. If issue one passes, it will be nearly impossible to get a citizen-sponsored issue on the ballot or to pass it if by some miracle we did get it on the ballot. To get something on the ballot, we would have to collect signatures from 5% of all registered voters in all 88 counties. Missing even one signature from one county would end the effort. If the issue did miraculously get on the ballot, it would have to pass by 60%. I'd like you to consider some of the many important constitutional amendments in Ohio that passed with less than 60%. 1923, white male was removed from voter eligibility with 56%. 1953, the state militia was racially integrated with 58.2%. 1961, women were allowed to join the National Guard with 50.1%. 1982, low-interest financing for homebuyers with 57.4%. Supporters of issue one say that the constitution should be hard to amend, and that is true. It should be, and it is. In 110 years, Ohioans have only put 71 citizen-led amendments on the ballot, and only 19 of them passed. Guess who has put far more constitutional amendments on the ballot? The General Assembly. In that same 110-year period, the Ohio Legislature has put 156 initiatives on the ballot, and 108 of them passed. The last citizen-led ballot initiative was five years ago. In contrast, in the last 273 days, the General Assembly has referred three constitutional amendments to the ballot, including issue one, a constitutional amendment to ban citizen constitutional amendments. The General Assembly does not have to go out and collect signatures to put something on the ballot, but we do. Issue one doesn't make it any harder for the legislature to put a constitutional amendment on the ballot. It just makes it harder for us, the people of Ohio, to do so. If you think something smells fishy, it does. Someone is misusing their power, and it is not us. Issue one would take away one of the few tools that we, the people, currently have to hold our elected officials accountable, and it's clear that they need to be held accountable, as much today, if not more, than they did in 1912. Unchecked power leads to corruption. Regardless of what you see in the TV ads, which are getting nuttier by the day, issue one is not about abortion rights, it is not about parent rights, it is not about gun rights. Abortion access will be on the ballot in November, and whatever your views are, go to the polls then and vote your conscience. But there is only one thing on the ballot in August, and that is whether we, as Ohio citizens, want to give unchecked power to the politicians in Columbus.
Really well said.
Whatever our political beliefs are.
And I want to thank you very much for coming. You have used your five minutes really.
Okay, I'm done.
I know you probably had more, but.
I support your resolution.
That was a really good talk, and I appreciate it very much. But I treat everybody the same, so that when somebody comes up on the other side, I will stop them at five minutes as well.
I had one second.
I know.
I was almost there.
You timed it pretty well.
You could have written our legislation.
Is there anyone else who would like to address counsel on this resolution? Okay. I will turn it back then to counselors and any comments that you wish to make. I'll start at that end, if you don't mind.
There was a hand in the back. Was that a joke? Did you want to talk?
I always miss that.
Oh, no. Okay.
Yeah, if I miss anybody, she's in charge of finding them, so that's good.
I just wanted to, August 8th is the day of the election. You can vote early until August 7th, and you can still up until August 1st.
No, not 7th. That's the day before. They moved it back. They eliminated the Monday and Saturday and Sunday.
Right. Thank you. And it's not still too late to request an absentee ballot if you happen to be a, if you get the Journal News, they actually had a paper form in there. So yeah, please do vote. Obviously, many people are on vacation, but it's worth making the effort as people are.
Anyone else?
Yes. So on June 29th, Ms. Wardle and I went to Cincinnati. There was a vote no rally at the local Pipefitters Union, Local 329 in Cincinnati. And what was amazing about that is that in such a polarized time, I was in a room with Republicans and Democrats and independents and libertarians, all united against one issue, and that was issue one. And I know that because somebody who had gotten up to speak didn't quite read the room very well and said something negative about our previous president, and I can see some of the people sitting around me who were very upset about the comment that she made. So I know that we were not aligned similarly in terms of our political views, and yet we were still in that space together, united against issue one. So I can assure you that this is, there's a coalition behind this, trying to defeat this. This is a bipartisan situation, and I think there's something also important that should be coming up on the November election. Right now, in our state constitution, we have language that says something similar to slavery shall be illegal in Ohio except for in the commitment of a crime, slavery and involuntary servitude. There is, in our state legislature, a Democrat and a Republican that are working together to take the except-for language out of the state constitution, basically saying that there shall be no slavery, full stop. There shall be no involuntary servitude, full stop. I don't know that that's going to pass with 60% of the vote. We've seen all of the other important constitutional amendments that had passed with less than 60% of the vote. So there are a lot of important things on the ballot in November, but again, whatever your conscience is, we can vote then, but none of our votes will matter if we do not beat back issue number one. So I encourage people to vote now.
In light of the new Barbie movie coming out, I like to think of, I like to think of Mike DeWine in different forms. I think about the December 2022 Mike DeWine that was so against August elections. That Mike DeWine did not want an August election. It was a waste of money. It was a waste of effort. But then you have this revamped Mike DeWine in April of 2023, four months later, that said, I think we should have an August election, this August. So it is a waste of money. It is something that, if they really want it on the ballot, it should have been on the ballot in November. The question is, why is it this special election that Mike DeWine in 2022 did not want to have, and why is it happening now? So I think that it should be, when we just had the fire and EMS union representative come up and talk about how we are looking and begging for money for all these different things, our schools, our fire, our police, all these things we care about, why are we spending $20 million on an August election? So this is something that, you know, I want to play with the Mike DeWine from 2022, right? Let's bring him back.
Barbie is just going to be in my.
No, I'm having like a weird mashup of Ryan Gosling and Mike DeWine. Not great. So apart from that, I just encourage you all to talk to your friends, talk to your family. I mean, we have to completely span this from now to August 8th. Vote early if you need to. Make sure, right, I think, so, thank you to our very impassioned members of the public for coming up and speaking. There is no comfort zone here. Show up, vote, period, because no matter how many signs you see, I think we've all fallen into that trap before, where you feel really good about how many people are going to vote, and then something fails and you're shocked. Don't be shocked. Go vote. And for our bevy of young people in the back, I think on social media, the ACLU of Ohio, the League of Women Voters are all really great resources. Post it to your Instagram stories. Talk about it all the time. Even if you can't vote yet, or your friends can't vote yet, somebody in their lives can vote, and they need to know to go vote no. So thank you all. And thank you to Jason and David as well for bringing this forward.
Glenn, you have any comments?
Yeah. Normally, I don't have a lot of comments, but this one, this one, it pisses me off, too.
Yep.
I want to talk to the young guys in the back, young people in the back. You ever play a game, and when somebody is losing that game, they change the rules? That's exactly what's happening right now. So in my opinion, there are individuals that are very well-funded because of various things that have happened in their lives and their group's lives, but they're deathly afraid of your generation, because you guys are fully informed through social media channels and other things that are very difficult to control, and therefore, they can't fleece you as easily as former generations. And as a result of that, they're going, well, we can't get by certain kinds of things anymore because people are going to actually look into this stuff. And once somebody has a discovery and they can disseminate it almost immediately through social media, they know that those initiatives will fail. So what do they do? They want to change the rules. Last, well, last month, when we were talking about this, I said, like, there are certain types of things that regardless of your political affiliations, your ideologies, or even your values, that are just American. One of those things is having the ability to vote, and having it be a majority vote. And when you see, when you see people changing the rules, they're doing it for a reason, and it's typically because they know they're going to start doing stuff that wouldn't fail or that would fail if the rules are the way they are. So when you see people starting to change rules, a fundamental change of the rules isn't a party-affiliated thing. That's a small special interest group trying to control how things work. And as an American, I don't like people controlling how things work, especially when it comes to me. So I want you guys to, like, have a little bit of fun here, because I know this stuff can be a little dry. This one happens to be a spicy meeting. But when you see stuff like this, and we're talking about it like this, and this is a , I'm the small municipality of Butler County in Ohio, we actually care about this stuff, and we're bringing it forward because this is an American issue. This is not a party issue or anything like that. This is an American issue. This is an Ohio issue, and if this passes, those rules get applied to all kinds of other things, and you heard some of my other counselors talk about that. So make sure that, like, they was, you'd have just said that. Anybody that is voting eligible, so you might have older siblings, parents, things like that, try to, try to talk to them about it. Say, hey, what do you think about this issue? There are certain groups that haven't been focused on it all, and then there are other groups that have been heavily marketed to about this particular issue by design. There are very well-funded groups in Ohio led by very evil people, in my opinion, that are trying to change this state, in my opinion, for the worse. And again, as an American and an Ohioan and a person sitting up here that likes to espouse the values of everybody and having freedom because you're American, this thing sucks. Please vote no.
Thank you, Glenn. You had one last one.
Yeah, I did. There was something Chantel said. I just wanted to add one more thing, and Liz, I think you can back me up on this, from the vote no rally that we went to. There was a member from the firefighter EMS union who spoke, and one of the things he spoke about was how upset he was that so much money was being spent on this special August election after saying that they were too cost ineffective. And the reason why he was upset is because he had asked the state for funding for mental health for fire and EMS workers who see so much trauma in their line of work, and the state told them that they couldn't afford that. And then it's turning around to spend this much money on this special election. So it's about where your values are, and your values are represented by your budget.
So the mayor gets to, no, I'm sorry, the public had their time. Now the mayor gets to speak for a minute, and I cannot think of any issue that is more important for Americans today than this one. This is a direct frontal attack on democracy. That's what it's about. Democracy is on the ballot. And Liz gave a wonderful talk about it that I wish I had taken down and had a copy of because it was so well said, but we do have it on, it's recorded. I can't think of any reason why anyone in their right mind would, who is registered to vote, would not go out and vote on this. I hope you vote early. I tell you that, for me personally, I'll just tell you, I don't trust the mail anymore, and I don't trust the little people who I don't know who are reading my signature to find out whether it's really the same one. So I'll tell you what, if you were going to do an absentee ballot and take it to the Board of Elections to turn it in, which is, there's only one place you can turn it in, well, you may as well go inside, because it only takes a couple more minutes, and then you know your vote is counted. I voted, and I voted no, and I hope every citizen of Oxford will get incensed about this and will go out and vote no. And if you don't, then, and it loses, and this particular thing passes, then you have only yourself to blame, because this may be about one issue in November that they found out 59% of Ohioans are in favor of, but it could be something else for you down the road, and you don't know what that is yet. So I think I join my colleagues in thanking our colleagues for putting this forward, and I think that it's time for us to vote. Oh, yeah, this is a voice vote. I kind of wondered if you. But I'm going to go ahead and say, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? See, it's unanimous. All right. Thank you very much. The resolution is adopted. You may read the second one.
A resolution authorizing the sister-city agreement of partnership between the city of Dubno and the city of Oxford, and authorizing the mayor to sign the agreement on behalf of the city.
Okay. Is there a motion to adopt this?
No move.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you very much.
Sure, I'll say a few things, and I'll turn it back to the mayor, but as Mayor Snaitley knows, we talked for some time about trying to find a sister city in Ukraine, and with the help of Ukrainian Action, which Bill knows quite a bit about this operation, he can tell you more about that later, we were able to find a city, Dubno, Ukraine, which is in the northwestern part of Ukraine. It has a population of about 36,900 residents and an area of 10 square miles, so it's just a little bit bigger than the city of Oxford, but we're happy to recommend this to city council tonight. We have two resolutions on the agenda. The first one is recognizing the partnership agreement that we're proposing with Dubno. And then the second one, which will be read later, is a memorandum of understanding, which goes into the specifics of what we expect with our relationship with Dubno, Ukraine. So with that, I'll turn it back over to the mayor.
I'll just say a few words. Ukrainian Action is a nonprofit organization. It's based in London. It is registered both in the United States and in Great Britain, and what they, their sole purpose is to take humanitarian supplies to the people of Ukraine, which they have been. which they have been doing since the war broke out. They take zero money for overhead. It all goes to the vehicles and supplies like generators and medical supplies that go to Ukraine. So I'm very proud of my former student who's involved in that. He brought this issue to our attention and we pursued it. When Doug and I were at Dufferding, we found out that we were the only sister city there who only had one sister city. And so we kind of had it in our mind that if there was another appropriate one, that we might look into it. And we really think that at this time, with what's going on in the world, that the Ukrainian city is especially appropriate. I had the opportunity to speak with the mayor of Dubno on FaceTime. And I have to say, it was a great conversation and the mayor is excited about it. And if this passes and we are able to go to Dubno, they are planning to raise the Oxford flag up in the city of Dubno. We're going to have an official signing ceremony and a dinner to celebrate. They have talked about a number of ways that they would like to cooperate with the citizens of Oxford, including service clubs, including a lot of other things that people here can do. And so I hope that we will follow up on that. So that's about all I guess I would say off the bat. Is there anyone from the public who would like to address this resolution? Sure.
My name is Jim Samlin. I live at 105 Old Farm Road. Only been in Oxford for two years. I was living in Budapest, Hungary before that. Worked with a Christian group there and at Miami and also involved in Oxford Bible Fellowship. And I very much applaud this resolution. I have friends in Ukraine. I've been to Ukraine a number of times. I get emails every day and I think this is just tremendous to show not only encouragement to the people, but also do it in a very practical way. And I very much applaud you for both these resolutions.
Thank you very much. We appreciate it. Anyone else like to address this resolution? Counselors? Okay. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. The resolution is adopted. And former mayor, Mike Smith, and I will be traveling to Dubno tomorrow in order to carry this resolution from the council directly to them. Knock on wood if you say, all right, can read the third resolution.
A resolution authorizing an agreement for a sister city relationship memorandum of understanding between the city of Dubno, Revi, a blessed Ukraine, and the city of Oxford and authorizing the mayor to sign a memorandum of understanding on behalf of the city.
Okay. Is there a motion to adopt this resolution?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Doug, do you need to say anything else?
I don't think so.
Okay. So this is a pretty standard memorandum of understanding and it basically lays out how we're going to operate. It's pretty standard with all sister city relationships. And so it's, in a sense, boilerplate language. Is there anyone from the public who wants to address it? Okay. Any comments or questions from council?
Yes, I would just say it is kind of an investment. It takes time to set up the relationships.
Yeah.
There is literally a commitment to fund, for example, the travel back and forth. But I think cultural interchange is a worthwhile investment. And it's really nice to see how other people similarly sized cities solve their problems. And I think we, it's an investment that pays dividends for us and for hopefully our sisters.
Yeah. And I would also say that that, the section is boilerplate about, we pay for us to go and you pay to come here. The truth is, if they come here, we'll probably, we'll probably take care of a lot of expenses for them. Because we're happy to have them and we want to be gracious hosts and so. And as I'm going over there, they're at least feeding us. So I know that. I'm, I'm sorry. I know. Yeah, public time's over.
Sister city to anybody else?
I'm sorry. I know. I appreciate it. Okay. Are there any other questions or comments? I want to just say to the public, we always allow public comment.
Yes.
We always allow public comment, but it's during that period and then we move on. And so I try to be fair with everyone, even though you may be supporting me.
Absolutely. Thank you.
I appreciate it. Okay. Is there any further comments by council? Yes, Glenn.
Our current sister city is Dufferdodge in Luxembourg.
Yes.
Is what?
Dufferdodge, Luxembourg is our current sister city. And a city may have more than one sister city. And when we were in Luxembourg, we found out they have, Doug, five or six?
I think five.
I think they have five sister cities.
Yeah.
And I, I think that's about intercultural exchange, like Dave's saying. I think that's what it's about. And so I appreciate everybody's support for that. All those in favor of the resolution indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution is adopted. Well, thank you. And we'll move to number four.
A resolution adopting a statement indicating the services the city of Oxford, Ohio, will provide to the territory proposed to be annexed into the city of Oxford, Ohio pursuant to a petition filed with the Board of Commissioners of Butler County, Ohio, as provided by the Ohio Revised Code, Section 709023C.
Okay. Is there a motion to adopt this resolution?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded? Doug?
Yes. So an expedited type two annexation petition was filed with the Butler County Commissioners on June 7. The petition is for 6.726 acres of land, three parcels off of State Route 732 in the terminus of North Campus Avenue. As you know, Fairfield M Hotel, 92-room hotel is proposed for this site. The city of Oxford requires that properties wishing to be served by the extension of municipal utilities must annex to the city. So as a result of filing the petition, the city is required to adopt two resolutions. The first one here is a statement of services to be provided. And then the second one is a stipulation of buffer area requirements. If the zoning permitted uses are incompatible with current county township zoning in this adjacent remaining township land. So both items are on the agenda. The first one is the statement of services and the second one deals with the buffer areas. If no objections to the annexation by the city or the township are received by the Butler County Commissioners within 25 days after the filing of the petition, then the commissioners must grant the annexation. Any objections to the annexation must be based solely on the petition's failure to meet the statutory conditions of the petition. So once the commissioners grant the annexation, assuming they do, then after 60 days has transpired, the city council may adopt an ordinance accepting the annexation. And I'll be glad to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone from the public who would like to address this resolution for council? Yeah. Come on up. Sure. Don't be sorry.
I'm new. So when we're asked to.
When we're asked to annex.
Remind us of your name. Remind us for the record.
I'm sorry, Robin Boffman.
Thank you, Robin.
When we're asked to annex like this, do we get to know whether the income provided, in this case by a Fairfield hotel, would cover our costs for the services?
Okay, thank you.
Is there an answer?
We don't have debate here.
Oh, I didn't know if there was.
No, we don't.
I wouldn't go into debate. Thank you.
That's fine.
Okay, I'll do better for debate.
You're doing great, Robin. Yes, sir.
Hi, I'm Paul Orell. I own the property of Fire Wave, North Campus Avenue. Just a matter of question procedure more than anything else. If the city is to annex that property, does the city then become involved in things like approving the building and the zoning and all the regulations, stipulations of the Fairfield Inn? I would anticipate yes, but being that this is an emergency type of thing.
Thank you very much. And I'm going to, after you sit down, I'm going to ask the city manager to respond to both.
Thank you.
If you'd like. Okay, sure. Well, you mentioned an emergency. We're not passing this as emergency legislation. This is a resolution. It's just one reading. So this deals with the annexation. And you'll see later on in the agenda, there's an item that comes up dealing with the water and sewer services. So this is one component of it, the annexation of these parcels. The petition was signed by the property owners. We'll probably have some discussion on that, a third piece of legislation, because basically we've been working with developers to discuss our standards and they have revised their plans that they've submitted to the city. But one of the issues that we face here is this annexation probably won't be completed until mid-December because of the statutory time limits that we have to face with expedited type two annexation petition. So, you know, we're faced with the situation that tonight they had a BZA, county BZA meeting, and the developers have submitted for conditional use with the county. And I don't know the outcome of that, but we may hear that later. So this just focuses on the annexation of these parcels, whether or not this project moves forward is.
Doug, and I think part of the question was whether they will follow our codes on building and zoning. And that, the purpose and I think the agreement at the discussion was in fact that we were going to help expedite annexation. If they agreed, that they would follow all of our codes. And that's what the agreement is. So.
Let's just, with this legislation, let's just focus on.
Yeah.
The annexation of these three parcels.
Yeah. And did you want to respond on whether income, tax income, does it cover the provision of services? And a lot of those services are paid for.
Sure. Well, with water and sewer, of course, they're paid by user fees. And of course, the, the expense of providing it is paid for by the revenue. Other services that we provide would be police and fire. Typically, we don't get many calls to the new hotels, police-wise. I would expect the same with a new hotel as far as fire goes. So yes, I would say it's a benefit to the city.
Okay. Thank you very much. Is there anyone else that wanted to address this issue? Okay. Counselors, any comments? Okay. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution is adopted. Please read E.
A resolution regarding the zoning buffers and a proposed annexation of property containing 6.726 acres from Oxford Township, Butler County, Ohio, to the city of Oxford, Butler County, Ohio pursuant to the requirement of Section 709023C of the Ohio Revised Code.
Okay. Is there a motion to adopt this resolution?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. I assume that your previous report covered this?
Yeah, I can just talk a little bit more about this. Deals with the buffer areas. So if it is annexed to the city and our zoning allows incompatible uses with township zoning, then we need to create some buffers. And of course, within the statute, these buffers can include open space, sidewalks, bike trails, so on and so forth. So, but the statute requires that we address this and that's what we're doing with this second resolution.
Is there anyone who would like to address this resolution about buffers? Okay. And counselors? Dave?
So it would seem that, I mean, the county re-zoned this as commercial, so they must not have deemed it incompatible with the surrounding uses? I mean, that doesn't mean that it's our determination, but they.
Okay. Yeah. Anyone else? I like working with Dave because I know that when you lean forward, you're.
And but the point of the buffers, I mean, our code, depending on how this comes through conditional use, a buffer may be required as part of the, you know, the conditional use approval or the commercial, you know. So just because we're saying that, you know, zoning in the county may not require.
Means that we recognize it. Any further discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Resolution is adopted. We'll move to resolution F.
A resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with Chapman Ford for the purchase of five 2023 Ford interceptor utility vehicles for use in the police division at a cost not to exceed $245,000.
Okay. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Jeff, welcome back.
Good evening again. A little bit of deja vu. I feel like I was here not too long ago talking about cars. It's been a rough couple of years for us. We, we've had a budget in 2022 for three March, I'm sorry, three vehicles for the police department. Two vehicles this year in this year's budget. Our order that was canceled once before in 2022 has now been canceled again here in 2023. So we're left without any options. Called to get pricing for next year to try to get on that. The problem is bids and dealership opening times for ordering cars don't match up. State bids are coming out two months after the portal that opens up to order vehicles. We did find, while I was talking with the state bid holder, did find five cars. He actually has six on his lot right now, but he has five that would meet our needs. They're not exactly what we've ordered in the past. They are more expensive than the cars that we had specced in 2022. But they will meet our needs and they're available. So they're on his lot right now. And we have negotiated a price down a little bit from where they were at on the lot. We're actually going to go pick them up if this is approved and our financing is approved with a supplemental you'll see later. But we'll actually go pick them up and that should save us some money as well. So we're coming before you tonight to ask for a resolution to allow city manager to enter into a contract to buy these five vehicles. There is a supplemental, like I said, that will come later, at the cost of $33,259 and 33 cents. But that should get us through marking all the vehicles, upfitting all the vehicles and getting them onto the road all by a year or two years later than what we anticipated.
Okay. Thank you, Jeff. Is there anyone from the public who would like to address this resolution? Counselors, any questions?
Got an easy one for you, Joe. So the time between your receipt of the vehicles and them being on the road for duty, how long is that?
I think three of them should be ready within a month, maybe six weeks. We did open a PO with our outfit company last year to buy all the things. Everything's sitting on the shelf waiting for three of them. We'll have to go through that process again for the other two from this year's budget. But they've started working on that quote for us and getting ready to order those. So that hopefully doesn't take too long.
Appreciate it.
If I could just say thank you. I know you have persisted. And this is one of the things that's fun. It's nice to have the money budgeted to buy a new car, but it turns out car shopping is kind of stressful.
Very.
Very stressful.
We went through this back in the winter with our parking division, trying to get them into a new vehicle. And there's just nothing on lots, nothing on bids, nothing, there's nothing out there for us to buy. They're selling the cars that have all the options that cost a hundred thousand dollars. They're not taking care of the fleet vehicles that we like to buy. Not the, you know, we're not buying the Mercedes again. We're buying the low-end ones.
All right.
I have a question. Assuming nothing terrible happens to the cars in terms of accidents, those types of things, how long do you expect these cars to be in service?
Some of the cars that we'll be replacing, one is a 2007, one's a 2009, one's a 2008, another one's a 2009. So these are, these are pretty old cars. When you start adding up the engine hours on them, the road mileage on them, you know, they're three, 400,000 miles on the engine if you start adding in the engine hours to go along with them.
Thank you.
I was just going to say congratulations and also I'm knocking on wood as I say that.
I'm hoping. I've not seen them yet, but he promises me they're sitting there just waiting until we get the financing approved. So.
I think we should pass this resolution then.
You should go pick them up.
All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
And we'll move to item G.
A resolution authorizing the city manager to apply for a $60,000 interact for health grant to support the proposed tobacco retail licensing program.
Okay. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. And, oh, okay. Jessica?
Good evening. This deals with a ordinance that we have on later the agenda, but it is a grant that we want to apply for that is over 50,000. So it does require council approval. We do intend. We do intend to ask you to pass a tobacco retail licensing program, and it will require more staff to help with the enforcement and administration of the program. INTERACT for Health is a nonprofit public health grant provider, and they do have a grant specifically for tobacco prevention programs. We would like to apply for a $60,000 grant that will assist in hiring a new part-time staff for two years, so 30,000 each year for a total of 60,000, to assist with implementing this program for a pilot period. And then we can kind of revisit if the program's working and how we would want to fund it into the future. So, we are seeking permission to apply for the grant.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone from the public who would like to address this resolution? Robin, come on up.
Thank you. Sorry.
Don't be sorry, Robin.
So, what, what problem are we solving with this?
Were you here earlier?
Yes, sir. But about vaping.
That's what this is addressing.
But vaping's not illegal...
But I'm, I am not going to debate you.
No, understand, so vaping's not illegal, smoking's not illegal, underage use of both of those is illegal, correct? So, is that what we're really targeting? Is the illegal? Okay. Thank you. I just...
Yeah. This is a time for comment, and we're happy to have yours. So, thank you for sharing.
Yeah, no, thank you.
Appreciate it.
I just want to know what the purpose is here, but how...
You can if you'd like, yeah.
To clarify, this would pay for staff who would help with the enforcement to prohibit underage purchasing of vape and tobacco products. So, that's our goal of this. And then I'll talk about the ordinance, some of our other goals with this program, so we'll get to that in a minute. Thanks.
Okay. Thank you. Any further discussion? Okay. Counselors, any discussion, questions? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thanks, Jessica, for your effort to pursue these grants. It's very important. And we'll move then to ordinances, first reading.
An ordinance amending ordinance number 3697, supplemental budget ordinance number four, to make supplemental appropriations for fiscal year 2023.
Okay. And Heidi is not here?
I'll take that.
Okay.
So, just basically, this is a supplemental so we can purchase these five police vehicles. We, as Jeff mentioned, we had money from the 2022 budget. Those orders were canceled. We encumbered those funds. They carried over into this budget. We weren't able right away to purchase the vehicles with the 2023 budget. We found these five vehicles, or excuse me, Jeff, found these five vehicles, and we need a supplemental in order to purchase them.
Okay. Thank you very much. Is there anyone from the public who'd like to address this? While you're deciding, this is, we're gonna do first readings, and this is for discussion and so people can understand what it is, and we don't vote on that until the next meeting. So, that second reading is when we have the votes. Is there anyone from the public on this? Okay. Any questions or comments from counselors? Yeah.
This question for Doug. This is for those five vehicles, correct?
Yes.
And I guess this will be to vote either Doug, or Jeff. Are we in any danger of losing those five vehicles by not having the funds available sooner rather than later?
I have to defer to Jeff.
I see what you're getting at, yeah. It's a good question.
So, I don't think we're in any danger. You know, I certainly appreciate, I think, where you're going with that question. We did send them a letter saying that we intend to buy them pending your approval for both the purchase and your approval for the supplemental. So, they are expecting us to have that in August, but I certainly wouldn't turn down the opportunity to pick them up sooner.
Okay. Well...
Would you like to make an, propose an amendment?
I would like to make a motion to declare this as emergency.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. I will ask the city manager to, what is...
Well, I'm not sure we need to make it an emergency. We can just suspend the second reading.
I would like to make a motion to suspend the second reading and have a vote today.
Because financial appropriations are effective immediately once they're passed.
Whatever Chris allows us to do. I, I think it's pretty clear that, I think it's pretty clear that the community wants these, and it needs to happen, so.
Do you have a second for that already?
Yes. I have a second. Further discussion on the motion, moved by Glenn, seconded by Jason, to suspend the second reading.
And just for clarification, this is really just the price difference because it's taken us so long? Is that what I understand? Because it's a small sum of money. It's like $33,000. The person costs a vehicle's like...
Well, I think it also has to do with the fact that we can't find cars. There's no state term list.
But I'm trying, the number is not that large relative to the purchase.
When we budget for the cars, we're budgeting based off of the last year's state budget or state bid item, and then we add a percentage to it. That price has gone up tremendously. Some other projects we're working on right now, I cannot believe how much pricing has gone up since we went for budget quotes a year ago, so.
No, it's just me trying to understand, explain to folks the number, what, what $33,000 we're not gonna buy much?
This is just the difference between what we had budgeted, what we had available from 2022 for those purchases, and then this year's budget. This is the difference.
I'm a car guy, and I understand that there's more departments than just ours that are probably undergoing the same hardship. And if we, if we, in this particular case, I have a feeling like we're slow on this, another department may expedite it and steal it. So, that's what I'm worried about.
Don't say steal to a police officer.
They get it.
So, the vote that will, this first voice vote is on whether to suspend. If we suspend, then I will ask for a motion and a second, and we'll go through that process. So, all those in favor of the motion to amend indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Now, I would entertain a motion to adopt this ordinance.
Second.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there further discussion? Okay. Please call the room.
Mr. Ellerby?
Yes.
Ms. Franklin?
Yes.
Ms. French?
Yes.
Mr. Prethridge?
Yes.
Ms. Raghu?
Yes.
Mr. Bracken?
Yes.
Ms. Navy?
Yes. The ordinance is adopted. Thank you very much. Get those cars. All right. Ordinance number two, please.
An ordinance amending and supplementing the Oxford Municipal Code by establishing a new chapter to Part VII Business Regulation Code, Chapter 744, creating a tobacco retailer license for the state of tobacco and paraphernalia products in the City of Oxford.
Okay. And Jessica, you're back up.
Yes. Good evening. Thank you. We have been working on this draft ordinance for several months, and I want to at first extend a huge thank you to Jeff, Sam, and Chris for their help, and Healthy Coalition for helping us draft what is before you today. It's been through many versions before we've come before here, I can't talk, before we're here tonight. Youth access to tobacco is a public health concern in our community. You heard that earlier during the discussion with Lieutenant Robinson. And the City of Oxford has over 17 vape shops and tobacco retailers in a seven-square-mile area. We have parents who call us, raising alarming fact that their youth have access to tobacco products. And the Coalition for a Healthy Community and the town and the school system routinely report to us that this is an area of top concern for them. Before you today is a proposed retail ordinance that will establish density restrictions, create safe zones, and provide staffing for enforcement. The goals of the program are to decrease underage youth access to tobacco and nicotine products, to limit startups of new vape and tobacco shops based on safe zones and density restrictions, and finally, to set reasonable numbers of retail tobacco establishments in our community and restrict their location by establishing safe zones. This program will require tobacco retailers to register their business with the city and pay a $250 annual licensing fee. The fee will contribute back toward the cost of enforcement staffing and allow the city to monitor business locations, quantitatives, to maintain the density and safe zone requirements. The density restriction will be one tobacco retailer for every 1,500 people rounded up based on the biennial census. Utilizing the 2020 census report, we could have 16 tobacco retail establishments. This includes all retailers, including tobacco products sold at groceries, pharmacies, gas stations, et cetera. We recommend the creation of safe zones additionally where tobacco cannot be sold. They will be prohibited near parks, schools, and daycares. In the Oxford community, this will ban tobacco retailers in most of the Uptown area. This ordinance does not close any existing tobacco retailers. Instead, this new law will apply to new establishments trying to open and establishments that close and may try to reopen under the same use. The licensing implementation will be done by the Economic Development Staff. Staff members will send out the, that a license is due, how much it is, receives a license, send out the license, and we're going to work with the Community Development Office to enforce the ordinance in partnership with the police department. The cost of the program is anticipated to be $48,000. $33,000 for a new part-time code enforcement officer, and then $15,000 for other administrative needs. We need to do a license setup on our software system, community education, enforcement administration, et cetera. We are recommending a two-year pilot to see if this program works and has the impact that we hope it does. And then after two years, we're also hoping we get that grant that I mentioned earlier. And then after two years, we intend to come back to council, evaluate the success or failures of the program, and decide if we want to continue it. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much, Jessica. Is there anyone from the public who would like to address this? Ms. Sutherland, please come forward.
Stephanie Sutherland, Ryan Drive. I just want to clarify that how many existing do we have in the Uptown mile square?
Okay. You can make your statement, and then at the end, I'll have staff respond.
Sorry.
So, you can go through everything you'd like her to talk about.
Okay. So, I would also want to know, are there currently fees being paid by tobacco licensers, whether they're in the supermarkets or... Thank you.
Thank you, Stephanie. I appreciate it. Are there other comments from the public? Okay. Jessica, would you like to respond?
I don't have the count off the top of my head of how many are uptown. And in fact, when I did my first research, we had 17 retailers, and then Lieutenant Robinson's report had 25-plus, and so I was like, ooh, I need to go back and reassess. So, I don't want to misspeak on the numbers. We have a lot. And then as far as...
Jessica, if I could just say something?
Please, yep.
I got from the county the list of tobacco retail licenses, and that was 21 when I got that a couple of months ago. And to answer a question, yeah, they do pay a state license tax for that. It's not much. It's like, geez, $35 or something like that.
Okay.
And then we do not currently have a local licensing fee of any sort.
Right. Right. Thank you, Stephanie. Further discussion from the public? Seeing none, counselors? Yes. Jason?
So, I was wondering if the stores that are gonna be sort of grandfathered in, are they gonna get retroactive licenses, or they just get skipped over altogether?
We have a moratorium right now so that no new ones can start, if you remember passing that moratorium. And then the licensing cycle would start in March. So, once this would pass in August, we would then send a letter out to everyone who sells tobacco to explain this new law. And then we would then send letters in January saying, "It's time to get your license." So, those who are currently selling would have to get a new license with this new program.
And are those licensed transferable if a new business tried to take over the same location?
Sam, can you help me with this question?
I don't believe they are, the way our ordinance is written.
Well, it's first reading, so we can...
You know what? Let me, I want to get a very clear answer for you, so I'll come back with an answer on that. Thank you.
Calls is underlined.
Yep. Further questions? Yeah.
Got another one for Jessica. In a similar vein to Mr. Bracken's, if someone, or let's, let me ask this a different way. When in January you say it's time to get your license, what is the time period that they are allowed to get the license before they're ineligible to get the license and face those consequences?
These are very good questions. The license period is in March, but I need to, I want to get some answers for you very concretely, and I don't have it right now in front of me. So, I'll get that for you.
Good questions? Any other?
I have a question. You say after two years, the city will need to decide if the program's value is worth the cost to the city. Have you decided how you're going to measure that value? When I think about the presentation from Lieutenant Robinson earlier, he kind of talked about compliance and how many are tobacco products are being sold to underage users. In addition to that, are there other ways that you're considering measuring value?
Yeah. So, first and foremost would be the youth access to tobacco would be our first probably indicator of success. And the second would be the number of tobacco retailers in our community. If it was capped at that 16, or if we still had more, and if we were able to limit any new ones in safe zones. So, right now, like, without the moratorium in place, if someone wanted to open any place, anywhere, they could open, and so that would be the stopping of that.
Okay. Any further discussion? Yeah.
Can I just congratulate and thank everyone who has worked on this? I think the tobacco vape situation was something that all of us watched the growth of these businesses in the mix among all of other businesses that we had. And they were part of the mix, and I think we were concerned about the public health things, but it just, the straw broke the camel's back at a certain point when we realized this, this was not a situation which the, A, the market was really gonna regulate itself to prohibit, aside from the health impacts of the tobacco vape products, the economic and other quality, community issues of that, that too much of this kind of business presents. But then, of course, then there are the health things and, and the experiences in the schools. You know, I happen to have an 18-year-old, and I'm an adult looking like, why are there all these vape places? Could the market possibly support this many vape places? My 18-year-old says, "Yeah." You know, it's just the consumption is just that high that these businesses are operating because they're selling vape and tobacco products primarily to...
To kids.
To young people. So, I really appreciate that, and while, while I know my fellow counselor, Counselor Ellerby will talk about government operating at the speed of government, this was very expeditious governance, because not only are these businesses growing so quickly, and we don't seem to have crested, but we also do have to watch out for a legislature that seemed quite intent on preempting us from the ability to do this. And I really, you know, Counselor Raghu pointed, Vice Minister Raghu talked about Governor Dewine. I'll give credit where credit is due. When he vetoed, or his line item vetoed this, he said, "If the legislature wants to do something about this, it can." And he suggests they blast regulations of flavored tobacco products. Our legislature seemed intent on preempting us while doing nothing. And all of the giveaways to the tobacco industry in the budget were worrying, but that's a separate topic. So, anyway, I want to thank, because this was done expeditiously, it was done collaboratively with Butler County to see how we could do this. I, I think obviously this would, I mean, this is one of these things that would be preferable if our legislature did this kind of stuff. But if they're not going to, then we have home rule. So, just a clarification question, again, on the idea of the kind of grandfathering. So, existing businesses will have to, what they're grandfathered in is their location. So, they're not gonna be subject to, existing lawfully operating businesses won't be closed or dispersed according to this, but, but they will be absorbed into the licensing program. Okay. So, it's not like they're exempt from that, they're just exempt from those locational things. Okay. So, they will be regulated and, and in terms of like, who's using it, the quality of the products, the inspection, and so, yeah, this is currently a pretty lightly regulated industry that we need to regulate. So, thank you.
I think a lot of credit also needs to go to the Oxford Coalition for a Healthy Community, I think a lot of credit also needs to go to the Oxford Coalition for a Healthy Community, and they've been working very hard on this. And Amy Masetko deserves a lot of credit, and all the members of the coalition. Yeah.
And I just want to come, oh, I'm sorry. Well, back to Jason's question. If you look at page eight of the ordinance, seven forty-four point oh five down to three A, basically it talks about the tobacco retailer does not substantially change the business premises or business operation, talking about conditions for denial of permit. And one of them is the transferring of a location, which answers David. And then the second one is a new proprietor in an arms-length transaction. So I take that to mean if it changes ownership, then we can't give them a license. So they change the location, or they change ownership.
Okay, so that was the worry, because these ones currently uptown are currently grandfathered in, but if they change hands or switch locations-
The way I read it. The way we-
Just to add to that, the way this is written, this is not within the land use regulation or zoning code, so the right to continue the use on a piece of property doesn't continue with the land. It's with the business owner. Now, that's unlike the original creation of the program where those folks already have that location, and so once they're in, they're okay. But if they close, or they sell to a new owner, they're not okay. So if there's a time period where they're closed, I guess sixty days, then they can't reopen, or they can't transfer. That's the way it's written.
Great.
It is said another way, the transferability notion comes from liquor licenses, where they can be transferred. Some people hold them, you don't have to have an open liquor establishment. So this is intended to be different. And then on the question of what the renewal period is, it's no sooner than sixty days, but no later than thirty days. So there's a window there, and if one doesn't renew in time, then the license would be lapsed.
Okay. Thank you. And go ahead, because if there's other questions, they've got a week to go.
Yeah, no, I have a few comments. And thank you for working on this, to everyone that was involved. And the problems that I see, because we should always be doing kind of evidence-based policy, and the problems that I see, first and foremost, like has been stated, is underage youth smoking, vaping, whatnot. Since most people, as been stated, that start smoking under the age of nineteen, and nicotine is highly addictive. So that is the first and foremost problem, is children smoking, especially middle high, middle school and high school. The second is, just like any other new medication or drug that comes out, everyone thinks it's super safe. And so people who are vaping inside, and you think the secondhand from the vape isn't dangerous because we don't know yet, what we're finding more and more is that there are, if you can smell that vapor, you're in the room, you are likely inhaling heavy metals. We're talking about zinc, nickel, lead, and then there's cancer-causing chemicals like benzene. So not only are you killing yourself, you're killing the people in the room. So that is the second problem as well. And the third one is, when we look at the number one cause of late-term diagnosis and the quickest way to die if you're going to get cancer, it is lung cancer. So vaping will, once we get more and more data, that will definitely contribute to that. So this is a public health crisis focusing on children first and foremost. And so when we look at what medical journals say are the three biggest reasons why this is just exponentially growing in youth, number one, it's advertising. Number two, it's the appealing flavors, like has been said. Number three, it's the fact that there are these pre-filled pods, they don't smell bad. And so it's a different formulation of smoking that doesn't have the same stigma on it. So my question is, or one of the many, if I look at Rule three seven nine six five for advertising for marijuana places, they have a whole bunch of things that they can't do with advertising. So I have to think, even though they're buddy-buddies with the vaping industry, that they hopefully cannot preempt this type of regulation on advertising at a local level. And it is pretty extensive. I mean, if we look at section E, all the different things that say they can't do a billboard, they can't be within five inches, a blah, 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 can't have any type of handheld or portable sign, like all these vape shops, I want to have their little sandwich signs out. So there's a lot of things that they should not be allowed to do. And then there's so much language in there about, could it even be deemed as appealing to youth? So there, if we go state to state, there are places, especially if we're borrowing from dispensaries, they are blacked out, right? If we look at the, you don't even know what it is, right? You don't even know that it's a dispensary. They barely have any signs, and their signage is super tiny. I know there was some regulation for the signage in there, but they should not be allowed to advertise, and that should be regulated as tightly as possible. The appealing flavors, that's something that the FDA has tried to regulate, CDC has tried to regulate from a federal level. If they want to preempt us, so be it. They should preempt us. But we should, the flavors is the number one, biggest appealing factor for kids. And then the other thing would be, and I know this is beyond the purview of this, is really looking at where you can and cannot vape. To my understanding, I don't think we have any restrictions on that indoors and-
We don't, and my memory serves me right, there's not a prohibition in the state law either. There should be.
I thought it was.
No, I don't think there is, but I'll check on that before we have the next meeting, because I was surprised, because I've witnessed it in bars and restaurants.
We might have Chris look at that, because it's, I think there's some question about that.
Yes, there should be.
So we'll know by the next meeting.
And so then, two more things. When you go to different countries or states, they will have horrible pictures of what a dead person's lungs will look like on that cigarette box. That is what happens. Your lungs will shrivel up, and they look like crap, and you are going to die young. So those should be mandatory in these places as you're buying these items. This is what will happen, because I believe that most of these kids who are smoking do not understand how dangerous this is. And that I do think with appropriate information, many of them, not all, will make good decisions to keep themselves safe. The other thing was looking at taxes. So taxing vapes and e-cigarettes. But the interesting thing is, when we look at the medical journals, they talk about the ultimate goal is to reduce vaping among young people while maintaining avenues to help current smokers quit. So the taxation can be such a fine line that if you overtax a vape product, they're just going to smoke. You know, so you need to almost figure out where that fine line is so that, and they have a whole formula in some articles about what they, what these physicians feel and policymakers feel is the right way to tax. So I say we just go for, go for all of it. Yeah, I think that if we can pull out everything that we can learn from what other policies have been affected, we should do that.
So can I read back to you, I think I'm, just make sure I have your list. So if I hear you correctly, you'd like us to examine adding no ad, or limit advertising or no advertising, restrict appealing flavors where you can and cannot vape, look at mandatory pictures of, I want to call them bad lungs, and then look at taxing. So what I can do is work with both Doug and Chris on what we can do, and then have some of these amendments, or you know, additions before the next reading.
Did you include something about where we, if we can ban vaping publicly and publicly-
I have it where you can and cannot, so where you can ban, yep.
Okay.
If you could look into those.
Happy to.
I think that would be great.
It'd be amazing.
Thank you very much. Are there any other issues that you would like them to look at before the next?
Can I just ask a follow-along question about the advertising? To what degree, and this is for Mr. Perry, that our existing signage code, I mean, it's all, the signage has just exploded in the brilliance and the, like, so does our existing signage code help us with that, or do we need to also look at that?
I think if you better just to leave it in this chapter, our signage code is pretty far out of date from some of the recent Supreme Court decisions. And I think if we tie it to the licensing and the retailing of it, it's more directly tied to the safety, health, and welfare, even though land use codes are also safety, health, and welfare, it's probably better to leave it in this chapter. And I think, I think we can do some signage regulation if that's something that we want to do within this, even though it's not the land use chapter, I think it's okay because of, as was mentioned, the way marijuana's been handled at the state level, I think that's, I think there's support for that. We just need to do some research on it, you know, it's just, it's another thing to add.
Yeah, I mean, that's certainly less concerned about the vaping, but the aesthetics of the signage and the, I mean, it's-
The signage section that's in there now is just about the age.
Yeah.
The age requirement identification, that's all it is. There's nothing about advertising.
Given how much effort we put into other things, uptown particularly in terms of historic and architectural, you know, I just would love if the signage were, you know, not tetrametallized.
It would definitely not be content-neutral sign regulation if you were to have that in there, so definitely be a new thing.
Okay. Thanks, everyone. So I think you have plenty to look at, and we'll go ahead and read number three.
An ordinance amending the Oxford Municipal Code, Chapter Five, Section five thirty-seven sixteen, relating to the illegal distribution of tobacco products to prescribe the minimum legal age of sale for all tobacco products at twenty-one.
Okay, is there more that you would like to say on this, Jessica?
No, we just separated out the two chapters, so it's the same as everything we just talked about, just a separate chapter in the code. Thanks.
Okay. Is there anyone from the public who'd like to address this ordinance? Stephanie?
The current age for any tobacco is twenty-one or eighteen.
Thank you for your comment.
It is twenty-one. We had to reference Chapter seven forty-four and Chapter five.
Okay. All right. And is there any comments or questions by council? Okay, we will move on then to second readings.
An ordinance granting upon annexation the request of the Ohio Association of Regular Baptist Churches to connect to and/or extend the city water and sanitary utilities to serve a proposed ninety-two unit hotel at five twenty-five North Campus Avenue outside the Oxford corporate limits.
Okay, is there a motion to adopt this ordinance?
So moved.
Seconded. It's been moved and seconded. And Mike?
Mayor Snively, members of council, two changes have been made after discussing this with the city manager and law director. And also I have one typo that I'd like to ask to be corrected. The first change is in the title where we've added the phrase "upon annexation." So an ordinance granting upon annexation the request, that is new, and that clearly identifies the city's desire to have the property annexed prior to utilities being granted. The second change is in section one where the parcel ID number has been added to the ordinance. The typo that I would request to be changed is in the second line of section one. The staff report mentions a six-inch water main extension for fire service. We've got six foot noted there, so that should be six inches.
Inches and feet do make a difference.
Yeah.
All right, thank you very much.
No other changes at this time.
Is there anyone from the public who would like to address this ordinance before council? Okay, seeing none. Councilors, okay? I'm looking at the planning people, so.
Well, I had a question. Does it make sense to us? I mean, I think it's presumed that we're providing it for this purpose of a hotel. It's in the title, but does this ordinance necessarily, if for example, it were annexed in and some other land use other than a hotel, does this ordinance preclude that? Do we want to be specific about the purpose?
I think it does preclude it.
It what does?
It does, because we're stating it's for a hotel.
Okay, so that goes my question, because it's stated in the title, but I don't see it stated in the body of the text.
That's true.
And so, you know, do we want to say, for example, in section one, like, to the property, North Campus Avenue, comma, for the purposes described in the application, comma, just in the ordinance to make it explicit that what we're talking about is for the purposes of a hotel?
I think that makes sense.
Are you going to make that motion?
Yeah, that's my motion, that we would add a clause, and I don't know if that's the right best place, but after camp, under section one, under Campus Avenue, comma, for the purposes described in the request, is that what we, for the application?
Or you could do it at the end of attached tier two.
Yeah, either one.
For the, that I think would probably be cleaner.
So is it, is it an application or a request, whatever you defer to these guys? That's my motion.
And would you say that is consistent with Planning Commission's discussion?
Yes, I mean, I think it's consistent with, and all the administrative findings in this case of what our understanding is and what the applicants have told us, and so.
Okay.
So we're putting that in, I want to make sure I'm clear.
I believe it's section one, after Exhibit A, attached tier two, that would say, upon annexation, the request to connect and/or extend the city water and sanitary utilities to serve a proposed ninety-two unit hotel, to survey a proposed ninety-two unit hotel here.
So you're talking about actually making explicit what's in the title?
I think you just include there, to serve a proposed ninety-two unit hotel.
Okay.
Seconded.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded. Is there discussion on the amendment? Questions on the amendment? Everybody understands it? All those in favor of the amendment indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
opposed? Okay, amendment is adopted. Are there further discussions on the ordinance? Are you ready to vote? Please call the roll.
Ms. Franklin?
Yes.
Ms. French?
Yes.
Mr. Pretherton?
Yes.
Ms. Raghu?
Yes.
Mr. Bracken?
Yes.
Mr. Ellerby?
Yes.
Mayor Snively?
Yes. Ordinance is adopted. To the petitioners, good luck, and I hope comes, all comes to pass. And that takes us through, I believe, all of our ordinances, unless I've missed one. So we have announcements and communications, and so I will start with city manager.
Just one item we had fact-finding last week with the police unions, both the patrol and sergeants and lieutenants, and I expect to get that report next Friday, so it'll go out before our council, beating our first one in August, the fact-finder's report. There'll be no recommendation at that time with it. I would ask council to go into executive session to discuss it. Both parties have to accept that if one party decides to reject it, it has to be by a three-fifths majority, which would be five folks for us. And that's all I have this evening.
Okay, thank you. Michael?
Nothing.
Okay. Goes right to you, Sam. Okay, Jessica?
I just have two thank yous to share. One is to Seth Kropenbaker for all of his energy for the Red Brick Fridays this summer. They've been quite fun. If anyone's made it out to the neon nights, especially late when the neons were neon, it was quite fun. And then we also have the Books on the Bricks coming up, and then the Streets and Eats Welcome Back Student Event. So please join us for those upcoming summer events, and thank you to Seth for all of his hard work in leading those. And then to everyone else who's involved, the police, the streets, it takes a mighty team to put this on. And then another thank you for the behind-the-scenes work of our water department. So many of you know we're having our water department, our water tower is, you know, being cleaned and resurfaced and all that kind of stuff. But what that means behind the scenes is that there's people working really long hours and monitoring pumps and making sure there's not change in pressure, and, you know, they're dealing with power outages and all this kind of stuff. And that's really amazing that they're working so hard to make sure that our citizens kind of have consistent service. So it sounds like an easy thing, like, yeah, we're going to paint the water tower, but it means a whole lot more, and so thank you to that team for all that they're doing.
Thank you, Jessica. Heather?
Nothing, thank you.
Okay, Chris?
Yes, I want to be clear on my understanding of the consensus of council on the issue of banning vaping. Ohio revised code, section thirty-seven ninety-four oh one, clearly defines smoking as including the use of electronic smoking device in a vapor product. Smoking does not include the burning of incest in a religious ceremony. So it, my interpretation generally is that whatever smoking bans currently exist would apply to vape products. So I'm not sure what else council's thinking we might need in that context then.
I don't want to speak for the vice mayor, but I think that was the concern, was just to clarify that that was the case.
Well, I think that might need some education, because there's plenty of places around town that don't abide by that.
Different issue. Yes. Okay. All right, thank you, that's all I have. I appreciate that addition. Glenn?
My favorite day of the year in this town is coming up, August the fifth. It's the Red Brick Reunion. If you confuse us with the Red Brick Reunion- If you're confused as to what the Red Brick Reunion is, it's the Porsche show that we have, and pending the weather, I'm guessing we're probably going to get close to 200 Porsches in town for a couple of hours. It's kind of like a rolling art museum that you can see smelling here, and I'm sure I'm going to talk about it the next time we're in session too, but I'm just really excited about it.
Thank you.
Thanks.
I also wish a huge congratulations to everybody behind Red Brick Fridays and for Freedom Fest. I know that that's a lot of work and a lot of time, and those efforts don't go unnoticed, so thank you. I also want to wish congratulations, I'm going to read a little bit of this because I don't want to goof it. We had some journalists from the Miami Student who recently won awards at the Ohio Society of Professional Journalists, including two student journalists who have covered council, Sean Scott and Luke Macy, who both graduated in the spring, have done really stellar work for the Miami Student, so congratulations to them. The Miami Student won first place in Best College Newspaper, first place in Investigative Reporting for Professional Small Publications for Sean Scott and Luke Macy, second place in Best College Opinion Writing, and second place in Best College Sports Writing. So congratulations to all involved and to our journalism program that's no small feat, and we see our students come every week, whether it's for The Observer or the Miami Student. We appreciate your time, and we appreciate you paying attention to local government and local issues. Thank you.
Thanks, Alex. Chantel?
I'm sure everyone in the room knows that in my, when I'm not here doing really fun city council meetings, I'm a veterinarian in my real life, and this past Saturday, my husband, I was also a veterinarian, volunteered our time to spay and neuter feral cats after they were trapped by volunteers, and it's completely volunteer-led, fundraised by Ken Patarca, the owner of CJ's, that has raised so much money for these efforts, and so let me paint a picture of what this picture looks like, and I think all of us can see them running all around the road, everywhere, and everyone posting about, is this your cat? I don't know, whose cat is this? And it is rampant, so if you have an unaltered, meaning not neutered or spayed cat, over the course of 10 years of them and their litters mating, you get over a million cats. That's in 10 years. So this problem is huge. Now, let me paint a picture of what it looks like in the clinic. These cats have tails that are falling off, completely stripped of their skin and muscle, so we had to amputate some of them. They are super anemic, they're really sick, they're really skinny. It is a horrible picture, and this is something that we are not going to spay and neuter our way out of at all. And we need to have a tough conversation about what does responsible cat ownership look like? Because until we do, this is just going to get worse for the cats themselves that are so sickly and just dying, for the diseases that they are spreading amongst themselves, different viral infections, to other people, like toxoplasmosis that can cause abortion and birth defects, neurologic signs, and then also to what it does to biodiversity and-
Birds.
Cats are really good little murderers, they're so good at it, and they will do it even when they're well-fed. So they will, they will hunt the birds, they will hunt the reptiles, they will hunt amphibians, and they sadly do it for fun. I wish they wouldn't, but they do it for fun. So it is a really big conversation that we need to have, and it's going to get to a point where we're just drowning in cats whenever we need to have that. So I think that I look at it as a veterinarian and a city council that wear two hats of, like, I feel like this is more a city council problem than a veterinary problem.
Thank you, Chantel.
Had a really good time at the parade. It's been a while, because we didn't have the Fourth of July meeting, but the parade was wonderful. A young constituent came up to me afterwards, they were having dinner with their family at Skyline, and said they missed having candy thrown from the horse carriage, specifically Skittles and Twizzlers. So I'm not sure if there's a reason why we don't do it anymore, but something to consider, and maybe there's a reason why, but I told her I would get back to her. And I just wanted to thank, so if you look uptown at several businesses, there are these wonderful window clings with haikus. So the Public Arts Commission did a call for haikus, and we had several, over 160-some submissions, and so 15 area businesses, and I want to thank them, agreed to have the window clings with the haikus up in their windows, so please take the time to enjoy them when you're uptown. They won't be around forever, and specifically, I want to thank Jessica and Heather and Ashley and John Buckles for all their support, and then also for the members of PACO for doing great work.
I didn't have anything, but I wanted to agree with Chantel. As a conservation biologist, feral cats and even outdoor cats that return are highly, highly problematic to tolerate, and it's bad for them too. They live dramatically reduced lives and much more chance of taking on disease and getting ill and everything else. I fully support us addressing that very hard topic.
So Freedom Fest was epic this year. Casey's not here. On the fireworks display was orders of magnitude more impressive than in previous years, both in terms of the display itself and the location inside the park. I always thought it was quaint to see it from a distance, but it's a lot more fun when it's up above. I think the event was so amazing that the parking was sold out by like 8:00 PM or something. Maybe next year we need to think about some kind of shuttling or something to move people out to the park, because we may just be so successful, we'll be outgrown, but, so congratulations to Casey. I want to echo to the Red Brick Fridays with Seth and all the wonderful event uptown that provided so much great stuff to all kinds of different ages. I have to say, I was disappointed, because I think Red Brick Fridays is being on High Street, and I'm sure there were reasons for it, but I really hope if we're going to do fewer of these events, it's just not the same. When it's in the park, it was really crowded, and in part, it's kind of a branding thing. We've started to build the brand of the thing, and when you show up and it's not on High Street, it's just, it was wonderful, but I want to get out back on High Street. And if you haven't checked it out already, the paving has begun on Coal Ash Trail, and so what's the mileage on that, Mike? What additional mileage are we adding just in that section?
Two miles, Phase Three.
Two miles in Phase Three, so you're going to be able to ride from Pepper Park to the Black Covered Bridge, which is a really nice section of trail. It's been nice for a bicycle, but it's been pretty short, but we're really getting to the place now where this is really going to be a destination for us. Huge, one of the bigger capital projects. Well, we're going to do this water softening, which will blow the trail, that's a pretty big expensive, but this is really one of the bigger capital projects the city of Oxford's ever done, and can't wait to get out there and ride. So thanks to everyone involved with that.
I had a citizen send me a picture, they were so excited to see the blacktopping going on that section of trail, so I think that's great. I echo the comments of my colleagues about our city staff and all the wonderful things that they're doing. It's absolutely amazing, and as someone told me who's moved here recently, they just didn't know that moving to a little town was going to be so cool, and there's so much to do, and I think that we need to keep that going. A couple of things that I wanted to indicate are, number one, my support for our continued progress on the solar projects, and the city manager has been responsive, and I appreciate it. We're moving along on those as quickly as we can, and I think we need to be aggressive and creative and get as much done as we can. I also want to indicate my support for the Senior Citizens Center project, and I've had some conversations with staff, and I understand that we're waiting for the first part to get allocated, but I think we should be aggressive in following up on that as well. The Senior Citizen Project is an important one. Finally, I want to indicate that on July 24th, there will be a signing ceremony in Dubno, and it will be represented by former mayor Mike Smith and myself, and we will have the copies of the resolutions that were passed today that we will present to them. We're also going to present them with an Oxford flag. Thank you to Mike Dreisbach for making sure that we got a new flag for that purpose. We've had a flag, but we needed another one that we could give to them. And we have some other little items of Oxford that we will be sharing with them at that time, and I have understood that there will be things coming back that we will put in the city building. So with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Seconded.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?